Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Mayor and City Council Workshop for Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. I'd like somebody to rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Welcome. My privilege tonight is to chair this meeting. Our mayor is at the mayor's conference in Annapolis, so I'll be filling in for him tonight. First order of business is the review of the minutes February the 10th, 2025. Anybody have any comments or suggestions or thoughts on their minutes? It will be up for approval on Monday night. I'd like to receive our delegation from the Verdon Companies. Welcome. I welcome a familiar face from years ago, Tom Posse and his associates to address council.
So just a quick introduction here. So as you may recall, when we were talking about this property a few years ago, when it was the subject of annexation, there is a different developer involved that was proposing an age-restricted community at the time. That developer has since lost interest in the project, and the Verdon Companies have stepped in to see if they can make things work for this property to develop and bring some more rooftops to Tawny Town. So with that, I guess Marty Hackett will probably lead off from things for the... And you've all been... We shared the application for Community Village, which is why we're here this evening. So in order to develop the way Verdon would like to, we need to have the Community Village overlay approved for this property. Otherwise, it just resorts to the standard R-10,000 type of development. So hopefully, everybody had a chance to review the rather lengthy application packet. And tonight's going to give us kind of an overview of it and give opportunity to answer or ask questions, and we'll go from there. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to CLSI and Verdon.
Good evening, folks. As Jim said, we became involved with the property a little less than a year ago. We weren't involved in the original annexation zoning, but we have been working with Marty Hackett's firm to design a plan that we think works for the town. We are seeking a Community Village overlay. The roughly 126-acre property would yield 375 homes, predominantly single-family detached. If I remember correctly, 105 townhomes in the balance of the 375 would be single-family detached. About 40% of the property under the Village, the Community Village overlay, would remain in open space, which is one of the nice things about the Community Village. We can cluster lots and, in this case, preserve almost half of the open space there. The community's also proposed to be heavily amenitized with a clubhouse, a pool, multipurpose field, courts, covered gathering area with barbecue, community gardens, dog parks, and a trail system, all of which we kind of capitalize on its proximity and overview of Piney Creek. I understand that this is the first step in a long series of steps, but the Community Village overlay would help at least establish sort of the ground rules and the concept plan, and then we would go from that point forward. I know that at some point during the process, traffic will be a big concern or a big component of this. To that end, we have finished a traffic study and submitted it to the state, the county, and town staff. There's also, will be a lot of discussion about the plan, the comprehensively planned bypass road. We're kind of the last farm on that side of 140 where the road will likely stop, because once it leaves us and goes to the other end of the other side of Harney Road, there's a vast expanse of floodplain and wetlands. And where that road goes, or if it ever goes beyond Harney Road, I'm not sure. But we've certainly put a lot of thought into that and how we preserve options for the town. And we'll be exploring with town staff the possibility of perhaps, as opposed to us, you know, building on that side of 140, making financial contributions that would help get the one section of the bypass done that is eminent, the Mountain Brook Flowserve piece. But those are discussions to have with staff as we go through it. Tonight was just to kind of introduce ourselves, discuss the project, and kind of hear questions and feedback from you folks.
I'm done. He already did. Marty Hackett with CLSI. We started out, obviously, with the comprehensive plan, and it shows that master plan street that Tom spoke about. We can probably just jump right on to the annexation plot, obviously. The project was at one point in time, medium-density residential on the comp plan. It got annexed into the town and is currently zoned R-10,000 for the entire 126 acres. It consists of four parcels. If there's any questions along the way, I figure we could work our way to the actual layout and conversation of what we're proposing. This is the environmental... The environmental area, the main environmental area is up toward the north. It's the actual floodplain area, stream buffer area. There is an existing well that was drilled by the owner years and years ago that did some pump testing, not to the magnitude of... For water appropriation purposes, but just for trying to understand what kind of what's under there. There was no observation wells and so on, so it wasn't anything there. But there was this significant amount of water that was coming from that well. We showed that on the plans, and we show basically an area around it for protection in case the town decides eventually that they want to at least maintain it or look at a further investigation. And basically, that is the environmental constraint side. From that point, we went ahead and looked at the layout. We have our concept plan, which is in black and white. We have shown in our presentation. It was in your package. What we would probably want to focus on is going to that rendering, which is the same thing, except it's in color, so it depicts...
Rendering, okay.
As you can see, we proposed the single-family detached. We have the townhome areas, and all the townhome areas, in this case, we have set up as rear-load garages, rear-entry townhomes, which is really, in the grand scheme of things, under the Community Village ordinance. That's the way it's, the actual spelled out is what the preference is. With that, we do have the preservation of the master plan street that we actually have to the south end, which would ultimately curve into the neighbor property that heads over toward Maryland Route 140. And on the 10-acre piece to the east side, where we show a couple alternative alignments, which can be any variation of that, that area is what Tom had mentioned, that we'd work with the town. And we, basically, that property would be dedicated to the city. The right-of-way for the actual master plan street that's shown here, should the city elect to move forward with that in the future, we would obviously preserve the right-of-way and necessary construction easements for that as well. But as Tom mentioned earlier, if the focus point is on the alignment elsewhere, obviously, there'd be some willingness to contribute to trying to see that that project comes to fruition. Tom spoke about some amenities if we wanted to go in. Any questions on the layout?
How married are you to this layout, Marty? Is this just a first run at a concept?
Well, we put a lot, we put a lot of thought into it. As far as, is there an initial thought process?
Well, I mean, as I look at it, you know, especially the area that's more to the west is, looks like Pocono Speedway. You know, and it's... It just doesn't seem like it takes into account any of the contour of the land and, you know, what was there. It's like, this is what fits the maximum number of houses into this two-dimensional space. And I think we lose the character of what's out there. I mean, that's, and I'm speaking for myself here. This is my opinion, you know, looking at it. And the other, the other thing that I would say is that the connector street ties into, I think, what was originally going to be a Robert's Mill Road extension, which is probably never going to happen in that way. So I'm not sure that that alignment does us any good, you know, in a long-term master plan situation.
Alignment that we looked at, I mean, actually, the master plan shows this alignment tying into...
Fringer.
Fringer Road.
Fringer Road, right.
It ties into Fringer Road, which has about 800 to 1,000 feet of floodplain all along that whole area to cross it.
Yeah.
And that's the big issue. So bringing it down further and pointing it toward, further toward in-town, there's a couple connection roads that you could connect to. And I'm not saying it doesn't affect a house or two, but when, you know, in the grand scheme of things, if you're trying to get to connection, there's a couple ways to do it, but it's closer to the south.
I mean, I agree that if we can keep it to this side of Piney Creek, obviously, it's that much to the better. But if we have to cross Piney Creek with it, the place to do that is at the Harney Road Bridge now, because that's where the wetland is, where the floodplain is the narrowest. So I'm not sure if there needs to be some more thought and study. You know, we're obviously in the middle of a comprehensive plan update. And, you know, we'd like to work with you guys and get something that we can all live with, but we have to try to figure out where we're headed with the Worthington Boulevard corridor. So that we, even if we don't have, even if we don't build the road today, if we just preserve the corridor, that may be enough. You know what I mean?
If I could add to that, that's precisely what we would like to do with you guys. And we brought our traffic engineer in fairly early, had a few meetings with staff. I have a decent amount of experience in other municipalities with bypass roads. And I built a significant portion of Monocacy Boulevard in the city of Frederick, which, along with Christopher's Crossing, was this forever envisioned road. And what ended up happening was you got little pieces built here and there, but never got any real use or effect, because it never really connected. And in a case like this, especially when you're looking at those vast environmental areas, those properties probably aren't going to be developed. So you're not going to, you know, it's not going to be constructed as part of a developer project. It's going to be...
No, I would think that once you get to Harney Road, that's kind of the end of the developer standpoint.
And then, you know, and then what does that necessarily do? And I think one of the lessons that Frederick City learned was get the effective pieces of the road built that you can build that actually relieves something. And like you said, really important not to foreclose any opportunities as far as alignments or rightaways. But if the portion of the road that is the most bang for the buck is on the other side of 140 through Flowserve and Mountain Brook, pull those resources from other developments and get that piece built while preserving rightaways. And that was the discussion that we wanted to start.
I mean, you know, I just had this conversation with the mayor not four hours ago about corridor preservation and how long it may be, you know, but it... I can see from the development patterns that exist today that we're not that far from York and Frederick Street looking like Baltimore Street does today. You know, so it's, the need for the road is, it will be obvious. And I want to make sure we don't, like, maybe we don't shut ourselves out. I think that that's more important than actually getting any segment actually built in this area. I think corridor preservation is a much more important...
I would agree. You'll find a willing partner with us to work in that. We've got a, you know, a top-notch traffic engineer that has a lot of experience in the state with projects like this, and, you know, he is at your all's disposal to...
Other item also that plans were, was the intersection of Harney and Baltimore Street. With the, back through the annexation process, the recovery company wasn't there. They've since then donated the right-of-way along Harney Road. So this project was, has always been slated to actually do the work of that, which is really going to improve that intersection.
In a pipe dream world, I would, looking to try to cross the wetland at the Harney Road Bridge, I would move Harney Road and come through the middle of Soul's Farm and tie into the end of the road coming across the Flowserve property. So at least that, at least gets you that contiguous piece if you get there. And of course, there's a missing section in between, and then what do you do when you get, when you get to the bridge at Harney Road? But that's, you know, again, I'm just tossing an idea out there and things that we ought to be discussing before we get to a final on, you know...
Back to your original question, I don't think anything on a concept plan is ever set in stone. We did try our best to come up with a layout and a product mix that preserved the maximum amount of open space. Over 40% is fairly significant, especially when that 40% isn't all environmentally sensitive. You know, that doesn't mean much if it's all floodplain, but we really did try to preserve as much open space as we could. Yes, there's additional ways that it can be laid out. I think the takeaway is we're looking at a project that is roughly a little more than thirds, one-third, singles to towns, 375 units, or 340, I'm sorry, 340.
You said 375. I'm like, that's a new number.
Too many projects I worked on today. 340 units on 126 acres is fairly low gross density. And within those parameters, I think there's lots of options that we can work on.
Has there been any thought given to trying to preserve the house or the barns, or at least the big barn for use as some, in some function, you know, in a common area?
I have to be honest, no, we haven't looked at it, but we're not opposed to...
I mean, I've seen that done on other developments, and I'm just asking the question.
We're not opposed to looking at it if the juicy work is needed. Yeah.
Right.
And this is our initial application. I mean, we...
That's why we started the discussion.
Exactly. No, and that's what we're here for. You know, this, knowing that the city council has to approve the Community Village concept, working with them just to get through the main items as far as any corridor preservation, the general layout, if, you know, if we have to make an adjustment and it works for everybody, then that's what we need to do. But as far as the amenities for the community, I mean, we're proposing, obviously, the swimming, the swim club area. So we got the pool area. We got various pavilion areas for picnics and parties and so on, the garden area. If you want to, we have some renderings of the architect on just some of the open specs.
To get a feel for...
Just, yeah, general flavor, what that is. Again, that's, you know, just a rendering architecturally of how this thing fits. They actually utilize clubhouses and different things that they've probably done in the past. We have not taken the point to get the design done for the specific clubhouse for this location, but the garden areas and dog park area, whatever, we certainly give you a general idea of what they can look like. Looking at, again, as Tom said, we are actually preserving a lot of open space. We got a lot of active open space, actually, and, you know, we're utilizing the entire site, walking paths and so on. People can, pedestrian-friendly neighborhood pretty much, you know, throughout the entire area.
Important, certainly important facets, and I'm... I mean, I'm not opposed at all to the Community Village for a development like this, but I just want to make sure that we're, that we're all working on this right here.
And, you know, obviously, the items that you brought up are very important. And, you know, if we need to sit there and look at something or some other, a couple other, you know, options and all that stuff, we can certainly do so. Knowing the goal is to design properties with the Community Village ordinance. I mean, if you remember, I mean, you can see a lot of the product from back in the 80s and 90s and all, which I was very much a part of throughout that process. I mean, I did, I'm not going to say, I did most of them, and they're cookie-cutter quarter-acre lot projects. And I'm not taking anything away from that, but that's all that was in place there. That's all we had to work with was that Euclidian conventional zoning. And there was no open space requirements and so on. And now, when this was adopted, I mean, it was, it was very good for the town because it gave the flexibility in the design. And you can see the differences in the design since this has occurred with Carroll Vista and Meads Crossing and stuff. It just, and these projects, they take a while to get through. I mean, there's, none of these projects, and Carroll Vista, when it occurred, it took years and years to plan, build, occupy, and all that stuff, and Meads is the same way.
And it was, Meads was like 12 or 14 years, from what I understand.
That's correct.
So, I mean, and so we know that these things are, you know, take a while. In the original, original process, there was, you know, it was talk about making this a 55-plus community. Are you open to making segments of this, 55-plus?
So I have heard that one of the previous developers had mentioned that or discussed it with the town. Not a big believer in tiny segments of active adult. We are developing age-restricted 55-and-over communities elsewhere in the state. There's generally a critical mass size, because they are, for them to be successful, they generally are heavily amenitized. You need a certain base number of units to support those sort of amenities. Would not see this as a, you know, part age-restricted, part non-age-restricted. I know that, I know that there is a, there's always a need for 55-and-over, but there's also always a need for, you know, starter housing in the form of townhomes and move-up singles. So we don't see, we don't see the market demand for a large age-restricted community.
Not one this size.
And I don't think it would be something we would pursue. We did submit, and it's not part of your requirement for the package, we did submit a fairly detailed fiscal analysis that kind of looks at the cost ramifications and income generated by a development like this. We did it because it's something that is becoming required more and more often in municipalities to basically do an analysis of income and revenue for the municipality long-term. I know that that needle changes a lot one way or the other with age-restricted versus not age-restricted.
One last thing that I want to bring up is, you know, there's legislation going through the Maryland House right now about affordable housing. You know, and there was, you know, last year, there was, of course, the act that was enacted. And in your, does your package, I haven't read all of it, obviously, but does your package address any segments that may be in a more of affordable housing stance as opposed to, and I know you obviously want to maximize profits, but, you know, this is going to come at us whether we like it or not.
Well, and ironically enough, I've, just in the past couple of years, have been involved with the development of several Lytec, you know, affordable housing projects. We do not have a Lytec project component as part of this. Quite frankly, given the rural location and where the QAP is presently at the state to win those project awards, we wouldn't even get out of the gate. We're not near mass transit. I just, we just finished the construction of a 42-unit project in Brunswick, immediately adjacent to the railroad station. But in that QAP pendulum swings every few years. You know, one year it's got to be, you know, near mass transit, another year maybe it's pushing it to rural areas. I've seen years where it's like, just give me projects anywhere but Baltimore City. But where it stands right now, and we have an affordable project on the shelf in New Market as part of an age-restricted project. They would not qualify under the state right now with their current QAP, but you never know what may happen.
Yeah, and that's, you know, because we're not near any kind of transit or anything that would trigger...
About every four years, the QAP mandates change, so, you know, we'll keep an eye on it. But this sort of a...
With this governor, you've got to kind of keep an eye on it.
This sort of a rural, low-density project is not really what's intended for the Lytec projects. But yes, it is, it's definitely needed. You can't build enough of them, and there aren't enough incentives and tax credits out there to generate the number of homes that are needed.
I have no more, if anybody...
What else? Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation tonight. It'll give us something to talk about, I think, for things to come, so...
Great. But we will certainly be back many times.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, folks.
You again, you're right.
Good seeing you, Jim.
Next, we have the council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Anyone have any conflicts of interest on tonight's agenda? We will move forward and ask the those gathered if there is any public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Anybody have anything to say regarding items that are not included on the agenda tonight? Excuse me. Ergon, move into resolutions, ordinances, and agreements for introduction. Ordinance 04-2025 for the water recharge ordinance. Anybody have any comments or thoughts on ordinance 01-2025?
04-2025, this was, this will be the stormwater ordinance. And pursuant to the presentation last month, this would basically replace our existing code with, by adopting the Carroll County Stormwater Code. So pretty short and sweet, just a repeal and replace with a much shorter version that references the county code.
Ordinance 05-2025 is a speed monitoring system. Any further comments on that?
Tell me again how much each of these cost? I think I missed that meeting.
We, it does not look like the city would incur cost for this other than the time that it would take to verify the photos. And I believe there's actually legislation in... in session now that would allow a staff that's not law enforcement to review the photos to make sure that they're valid and accurate. But currently, it takes a law enforcement officer some time to do that, so that would be our expense for it.
Money off of the fees that are incurred?
Yes.
Do you have any kind of estimate about what that would be?
I do not have that in front of me tonight. We can take a look back at that and have some information, some ballpark numbers to share with you Monday.
On the numbers of speeders going more than 12 miles an hour over the limit in that area, certainly would seem to be.
I haven't changed my mind since my initial opposition to this project. It's a labor of government bureaucracy that we don't need, but that's just my opinion. We'll have to talk about that on Monday night. Resolution oh-four A dash twenty-twenty-five, Stubble's addition annexation.
So, this is the thirty-three-hundred Harney Road. It's the property we've talked about that has the failing septic system that we'd like to annex so they can connect to our sewer system. We are still awaiting a final annexation plat from CLSI, but the language of the resolution is pretty well set, so we would like to go ahead and introduce that this month so that we can kind of start the process working with the county. We need to submit everything to the county, including our resolution sixty days before our hearing, so we want to try to get that, get that ball rolling. And this, this would also include a couple slivers of property that are not part of the thirty-three-hundred lot. There's a small strip between the property boundary of thirty-three-hundred Harney and the existing Carroll County right-of-way on Harney Road, and we would like to bring that strip in. And we also learned when it was, when the property was surveyed, that there's another strip between this property and the Sewell Farm, which, looking at tax maps and GIS, one would think this property was contiguous to the Sewell property, but there's actually a little 25-foot strip in between that's part of the larger farm property to the rear of that. So, the owner of that property, it's Roll the Dice LLC, I believe, has been very cooperative and is willing to annex those two little strips into the city in order for thirty-three-hundred to be contiguous and for us to avoid headaches as far as like the right-of-way and this little strip in between in the future. So, again, waiting for the final plat, but the language in the agreement and resolution should not change.
Also, counsel. Up for adoption, Monday, we'll have the ordinance oh-one twenty-twenty-five water recharge. Any questions there?
Oh, I'll point out, we didn't have this in time for the packet, but Councilman Tillman had some suggested language here, and Clara has it ready to go if you all are good with it. So, basically, the first paragraph would now read, let's see. From your email here. So, whereas the portions of groundwater aquifers supporting Tawny Town's water system are inadequate to meet the Maryland Department of the Environment's water balance test, the community development anticipated in the Tawny Town Comprehensive Plan is not possible without acquiring the rights to additional acreage dedicated for groundwater recharge. And, and then it picks up where the existing one.
Yeah, thank you, that just, that paragraph seemed like it was confusing, and I just, and it made it seem like there, that the entire aquifer doesn't support Tawny Town's water system, you know what I mean?
I think, I think that was a good tweet, too. It a little clearer that we're not overtaxing the, right, the aquifer.
Questions to changing those words?
That will be in the official ordinance.
All right, also up for adoptions, oh-two, ordinance oh-two twenty-twenty-five, building construction fees. There.
And this one is really just kind of the partner to the last one that talks about the fees under the building chapter.
Ordinance oh-three twenty-twenty-five is the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget amendment number two. Have to do with the roof?
Yes, so on the general fund, that's our recently completed city hall roof and exterior renovations and repairs. And in the utility fund, we had one invoice that was outstanding for the current fiscal year for the de-watering project at the wastewater treatment plant, and we, so, we had not carried over anything with this year's budget for it, but we had one invoice that was paid this fiscal year, and that's what that amount in the utility fund is for.
Questions on the budget amendment? Resolution twenty-twenty-five oh-three is the water allocation for March. Comments there? Nothing, we move into the city manager's report, Jim.
Okay, well, as far as, nothing new on capital equipment, charter and code, we've already talked about pretty much everything I could say there with what we just ran through. Jumping down to the sewer rehabilitation, paving for the areas that were disturbed is scheduled for the coming week. Let's see, we have a walkthrough scheduled on Friday, I believe it is, the seventh. So, the areas that were disturbed have been fine graded and seeded. The grading permit's going to stay open until the vegetation where we've seeded becomes established before the county will close out the grading permit, but everything underground is done. Public Works informed me earlier this week that the, our paving cost where we, where we, and the process of acquiring the new easement around the Grace United's playground, where we rerouted the sewer so we wouldn't have to cut through the playground. The parking lot pavement was really, did not have proper base to it to begin with, and when we restore it, we want to try to do it right so that we won't be to blame if it fails in a couple of years, so the cost to do that is going to be a little higher. So, we are expecting a change order to reflect that, because rather than just put down an inch and a half of asphalt with no base that we know is going to fail, we, we're going to do it right and do the stone base and everything, so that was not anticipated when we, you know, had conversations with the church about, you know, going across their parking lot like that. So, we are looking at a change order and some additional costs to be able to repave that area properly. Last thing, Westview Drive, not a whole lot new there. We've ordered the additional valves that are going to go in to help isolate the area at the start of construction, so really, we're just waiting for, some more planning's gone on. We've gotten a tentative project schedule, but the start date still is uncertain based on the weather. So, you know, once, once we're sure that we're past freezing temperatures for the temporary water line, we'll, you know, set a date for the contractor to mobilize and get started on that one. And, you know, I've mentioned before, I think that this will be the last project to use ARPA money, so, you know, we did get that committed by the end of the year last year. Now, we just need to get it in the ground. Let's see, last thing I had, just a reminder, I mentioned this in an email, but we would like to have a closed session for legal advice Monday. We have some DARA-related negotiations and costs and things that we need to talk about, so. That on the schedule for Monday at the close of the meeting, and that's all I've got. I'm happy to answer questions or comments.
Questions for Jim? Off easy tonight, Jim.
Thank you.
Departmental reports, or department reports. Any questions on the department reports? And Lorena's report about a garden or something at Ballinger Park.
Process, we're going to see if we can get some grant funding, and we have an individual who is going to be working with us.
More about that as it flushes out. Legal report, is our attorney standing by?
I am right here, Mr. Mayor Protem. Good evening, everyone. I'll be brief tonight. I just wanted to update you, all the contracts and documents that you have in your package have been reviewed, with the exception of the speed camera document that has not yet been reviewed, that was submitted to me on Monday, so it will be reviewed so that we can further discuss it and make sure it's good to go by your meeting next Monday. This month has been a lot of discussion regarding the terms of, not just the terms, but the dealings with Mountain Brook and what would be in the Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement. And so, to make it clear for the public record, when we go into closed session on Monday, we're going to talk about the legal framework that can be used for Developers' Responsibilities Agreement, not necessarily the terms that we would put in there, those things we would talk about in public session, but there is, there needs to be a discussion, we have not yet had, about what we can do, what we can require, what does a DARA really need to do? Because this issue, as I mentioned to you, and if you watch the Planning Commission meeting from last month, there are a lot of strategic issues that the city is interested in, like the bypass and roads and things like that, that are going to be decided when this development gets built, and now is the time to figure out where we want to end up on that. So, our closed session is going to be a lot about that on Monday night. And other than that, I don't have anything unless you have questions for me.
Questions for our attorney? Well, you're off the easy, too, Jim.
All right.
The business. The monthly financial report, anybody think, anything of concern in the financial report or any questions on the monthly financial report? Approval on Monday night, and also next accounts payable, how about that? Anybody have any questions or issues with the accounts payable? Andy, that's also up for approval. Come to the time where we ask the audience if they have any comments on the agenda that we just went through. Anybody have any comments they'd like to bring before council? Charlie?
This might be the shortest workshop we've had in years.
Brings us down to the, does anybody have anything else from council that they would like to?
So, I do have something. Someone from the Tawny Town Farmer's Market reached out to me regarding signage, because apparently he had a farmer's market sign up and had to be taken down, so the ask was that we, at some point, look at the code about signage and discuss it. So, obviously, not for tonight, but something to put on your radar.
I have, I've brought that up in the past. I think, you know, our entire sign ordinance, I think, needs to be updated, modernized. There's nothing, you know, in there, I think, about electronic signage and stuff like that. You know, and LED lighting kind of changes the way sign lighting looks from the ground, and so I think we just need to go back through the sign ordinance as a whole.
And I think that because it's a local market, you know, it would be nice if we could, like, extend the olive branch and allow those people to do what they need to do.
There's always a fine line of balance between what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. The sign ordinance originally addressed the clutter that was on Main Street and the those type attitude that existed before the ordinance occurred, and I think it's served us very well over the years, but I agree that it probably needs to be looked at, modernized, updated. I, I would hope that it could be strengthened. I, I think the proliferation of nuisance signage is always a bane for municipality, and particularly one of our size, it's always something that has to be controlled, so.
That continues.
Don't disagree with looking at the ordinance, but I hope that we can better serve our citizens.
I happened to borrow the code enforcement truck late last week. The resident did some cleanup around the, around the circle voluntarily and left the bags out for us to collect, and it was the end of the day, and DPW was already home, so I borrowed Daryl's truck, and when I opened the tailgate and flipped the lid back, you know, just, just like the good old days, the truck bed's filled with all those nuisance signs that pop up every weekend, and so it remains, you know, an issue that, you know, people just go around and place signs without permission and, you know, no permits, and, yeah, so it's, it's an ongoing challenge, especially with those off-premise kind of signs, so, yeah, never hurt to take another look at it, so.
One question I had, and this is just, I guess, my own curiosity, but something that needs to be talked about. We are fast approaching the 250th anniversary of our country, and I know we have some kind of, or maybe I don't know, what, what are we doing to address that? I know this came up at a history museum meeting the other day, where we're, they're working on it from their standpoint, but they wanted to know what the city's efforts were in this regard, and I, quite frankly, couldn't tell them.
And I don't have a lot to share either. The former Economic Development Director had kind of been engaged a little bit with a larger 250th effort. I did meet with representative from the History Museum and Heritage Group as well to see if there's anything where we can coordinate our efforts, but at this point, we don't have anything locked in. You know, there, there are a number of different groups that we're affiliated with that are, working up plans for celebrations on the 250th, including the Heart of the Civil War Heritage Area, so I'm hoping when we fill our economic development position, if, if that happens soon, if not, I may, and unfortunately, this is our Park and Recs Director's getting to be her busy season, so I don't know that I want to put something else on her, but it is, you know, if we're talking about, you know, activities around the city, you know, that could fall under that umbrella as well, but right now, we have nothing concrete on it.
We, we should really think about that, because it's like a year and three months. I mean.
I will be going to a Destination Gettysburg, their annual meeting is on the 31st, remembers the Destination Gettysburg, so the speaker there is someone who's connected with the National 250th Celebrations, and I will.
I will endeavor to get as much information and contacts as I can and bring them back, and so we can, maybe we can co-tail on some of the things that would be happening by town.
We do have some information in the Economic Development Office, but I have not delved into where, if the former director had really started to develop anything locally.
All right. Anything else to come before the council?
Just one thing real quick. I believe we have a meeting set up for March 12th for our next meeting to discuss the, the future of Main Street. That's at 7:30 on, on the 12th. You'll have a fair amount to discuss.
Yes, that's correct. Next Wednesday.
Maybe mention that since that was supposed to be the Parks and Rec night, that we overlapped, that maybe the Parks and Rec is now the Thursday because we had to change our meeting.
Oh.
Go for Parks and Rec, and that's not what it is, that's why.
Yeah, I had, I had, I had suggested several dates, and that was the one that seemed fit everybody the best, and I didn't, I did not realize we'd stepped on, on a Parks and Rec meeting, and I apologize, I had no idea.
Anything else to come before the group? Motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Favor?
Second.